Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening. Welcome to the June 2nd Planning Board meeting for 2025. The first matter on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from May 19th, 2025. I know we just received those recently. I don't know if all the board members had a chance to look them over. If not, we can continue them through the next meeting, whatever the wish of the body is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the approval of those minutes. I know they came out late this afternoon, so make a motion to continue the approval of the minutes to the next meeting.
Second?
I'm in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. And the next meeting is two weeks from tonight. So that'd be 6:14, I believe?
Six, 6:16.
6:16, I'm sorry. Yeah, 6:16, I meant to say. Okay. And moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a special permit for 558 Gorm Street. LML Investments LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to construct two townhouses, one with four units and the other with two units at the above address. Subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review per Section 11.4.2 of the Lowell zoning ordinance for development with more than three units and a special permit approval for Section 11.3.2 for four to six dwelling units on a single lot in the UMU zoning district. This matter was before the planning board on April 7th, and on April 7th, the applicant requested we continue to May 5th. On May 5th, the applicant requested we continue it to today. As of today, I have not seen a new set of plans. I was informed late this afternoon, around 2:30, that planning staff did receive a new set of plans, which is two weeks late because it did not meet our deadline submittal. I spoke to the planning staff. They indicated they had not had a chance to review the plans, had not had a chance to comment on the plans. They said they reached out to the other city departments. They didn't get any feedback from the city departments because none of them have had a chance to review the plans because they were not submitted in a timely manner. It violates our public meeting and due process hearing for a public hearing with plans that have not been submitted in a timely fashion. So as far as I'm concerned, I personally, as the chair, will not be voting on this matter tonight because I have not seen the plans.
Thank you very much.
Yes?
My name is Katie Unright, and I'm a professional engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. The plans were submitted late last week to the Lowell Planning Department, and the Planning Department asked that we come tonight and give you an update. So that's why we're here this evening. We're not intending to get a vote. We just wanted to update you as to the status of the plans and how the plans have changed since we were here in April.
Okay.
The plans have been changed to reduce the number of structures on the lot. Previously, there was two structures, one with two units and one with four units, consisting of six overall units. The plans have now been reduced to four units. One building is a single family residence and the other building being a three-unit structure. In that, we've also then reduced the impervious surface and the pavement. So each of these units has two space parking garages within them, and then there's one exterior space for a total of nine spaces, which is that, which is basically calculated by .75 spaces per each bedroom, which is three bedrooms per unit. As part of this, we're now in excess of 2,000 square feet of reduced impervious surface on the lot, and we've designed a stormwater management system to essentially hold and infiltrate one inch of rainfall over the entire site. We also received the peer review comments in addition to the comments that the board gave at the last meeting. And so shade trees have been significantly added to. We had requested that, or the peer review had requested that ideally three be added to the street frontage, and three have been added to the revised plan set for a total of seven shade trees, which have been added to the plan, along with 16 evergreens, 24 shrubs, and then 49 different herbaceous grasses, et cetera. The snow storage was also updated to a more easily accessible area that's now not encumbered by plantings and/or any of the utilities. So that has been added to the plans. We have also made sure that the plans show a newly constructed sidewalk on the front of the property at Gorm with either reset curb that exists there today or new curbing, and the curb cut has been reduced to meet within your standards. The city water main has been added to the plans. We've added to mill and overlay the area in a continuous patch, as requested by the peer review engineer for the utility work that we're doing within the street. We've confirmed that the catch basin in front of our site that we're tying to is not a state asset, and we're working with your engineering department, who's going to go out tomorrow and open the structure and just confirm where that structure goes to. But essentially, we're reducing all both flow rate and the amount of volume of stormwater to both Gorm Street and to our residential abutters. So I wanted to update you as to those facts prior to continuing and see if the board had any additional comments at this time that they would like to give. If not, we look forward to continuing to the next available meeting.
Thank you. First of all, outside, does anybody here this evening involved want to be heard on this 558 Gorm Street? Anybody here in the public want to speak on this matter? Since it's on the agenda, it's an open meeting. Nobody in favor? In favor? Favor? None? Opposition? 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 None? Any questions, board members? Mr. Froschette, can I start with you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question, and thank you for going over the elements, and I haven't had a chance to review the plan, so I'm looking forward to it. But one of the issues that I had was the facade of the buildings facing Gorm Street, and has that been addressed? Because we, some time ago, we're looking at design standards to provide to developers when they come in, and one of them is definitely that we don't want to see is sideways townhouse condos with the side of the sidewall facing the street, and especially in that traditional neighborhood with the homes facing the street. It's just, it's bad development. It just is. So I'm just curious if that's been addressed.
Yes, sir, and I apologize for not going through that, but new architectures have also been submitted. Where the single-family house now sits by itself, that has been updated with a porch facing the street with the door facing the street, and the garage is on the side of the structure. And then the three-unit structure has been updated with a door and windows also facing Gorm Street.
Okay. I look forward to seeing it. Hopefully, it'll look more architecturally pleasing, but also in keeping with really the streetscape of the existing homes. So, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you as far as moving forward with this. I think I want to thank the applicant for coming forward and updating us. Given that there has been a couple of continuances, it's appreciated that you're here in person. I look forward to the next time. Mr. Chairman, how, given that it's a revised plan, what do they have to do as far as notice now? Because the public would need to see this revised plan. Is it brand-new? Is it so many weeks? What is it, Mr. Chairman?
So since we continued it, we don't have to post it again. What will happen is now, if we do the continuance, at least the public can have a chance to go on the website and look what's been submitted. Therefore, the opportunity for to have a public hearing with people who've had a chance to look at it, because like I said, I went on the website today, this morning, I didn't see it. I contacted the staff last Monday, they didn't have them. I contacted the staff last, excuse me, last Monday and last Wednesday, they didn't have them. So if anybody else was looking at them, they didn't have them. Therefore, the notice requirement would not have been perfected. Therefore, anybody watching or wanting to look at these matters wouldn't have a right to be heard, and therefore, the public notice would be in violation. Whatever we did, if anybody challenged it, the whole hearing would be thrown out.
Yeah. What I'm hearing, though, is the applicant is requesting a continuance. They just wanted to...
But now, if we give a continuance, now that these plans have been submitted, now in a timely fashion, staff can have a chance to look them over, planning board members can have a chance to look them over.
Makes sense.
You know, planning board members work all day, travel distances to get here home from work, and they only have a chance to pull them up and look at them. I know most of us do our site visits over the weekend. If we had the plans, we could have looked at the plans, did the site visit. Without them, I still drove by the place, and it still looked the same as it did April 7th.
Okay. How far out should we schedule this?
Well, I know the next available meeting, I think, is August. Yeah. We have, we're booked in the June 16th, and we already closed out the July meeting. Yeah, I spoke to the staff today. We only have one meeting in July and one in August.
Yes, so we, the next meeting with availability is August 18th.
So is to request a continuance to that date? If so, Fran, you can have them sign that form requesting the continuance date. So they have a request for continuance. What's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter until the August 18th Planning Board meeting.
I'll second that with the understanding that the applicant is requesting the continuance, and we're...
They're signing the form requesting the continuance. Okay. So we have motion on the floor. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Their motion carries. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, next matter we have is a site plan revision and special permit amendment, 190-198 Plain Street. Lowell Dev LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to revise their site plan review approval and amend their special permits for a project at 190 and 198 Plain Street. The applicant was granted approval on December 4th, 2023, to construct three separate resident buildings. They are now proposing to increase the size of the Building 1 and Building 2 and reduce the number of parking spaces. The subject property is located in the regional retail zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review, approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for commercial construction with a drive-thru, and for the construction of a parking area with greater than 14 spaces. Special permit approval from the planning board per Section 12.4G1 for a restaurant drive-thru, and special permit from the planning board per Section 6.1.55 and Section 13.2 to reduce the parking required for restaurants by one space per 250 feet. This matter was before us at our last meeting, and after a long discussion in the public hearing, there was a request to continue the matter to tonight's meeting. So may we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Lowell Dev LLC, and we have the same team with us as we had at the last meeting. We have Chris Shea from DePreet Engineering, we have Derek Roach from Vanessen Associates, and I believe we have Lawrence Ben Bassett from Lowell Dev with us structurally tonight. As the chairman mentioned, this is a continued hearing from the May 19th hearing where we opened the public hearing and went through our site plan and all the merits of the application. There were a couple of concerns that came up at that hearing, which we have addressed. We have since submitted a revised site plan, which addresses the concerns, we believe addresses all of the concerns that were brought up at that May 19th hearing. So taking those concerns in order, the first was the fire access. So we have submitted a revised swept path analysis that shows good circulation through and around the property. That swept path analysis was conveyed to Deputy Chief Crabtree, and it's my understanding that he has approved that revised swept path analysis that's in your packet. Next, we had the landscape plans that needed to be revised. So our landscape architect reached out to the city landscape team, and the revised landscape plan that you have with you tonight reflects any revisions which the city had requested. And then we had the wastewater utility comments, which are addressed in the revised site plan. I'll leave that for Chris to go into in a little bit more detail when she goes through the revisions to the site plan. And then the last issue that came up was the access to and from Montreal Street. So I went back through the original application and the original approval from 2023. There was nothing in the comments related to Montreal Street. There was nothing, no conditions of approval related to Montreal Street, and I believe that's because the transportation impact assessment that was done, both with the 2023 application as well as the revised one that was done for this application, reflects only about 11% of any traffic going through this site ends up on Montreal Street. So what that equates to in terms of numbers is 15 trips during morning peak, eight trips during afternoon peak, and 19 trips during Saturday peak. I would suggest that's fairly minimal impact to Montreal Street, and I would suggest that that's probably why the transportation engineer for the city didn't raise it as an issue in her comments initially, or this go-around. I did have a phone conversation with Denise Eaton, who was the neighbor that spoke at the May 19th hearing. I explained to her what our findings, what the TIA reflected. She seemed to understand. I don't see her here tonight, so I'd certainly let her speak for herself, but she seemed to understand that it wasn't much of an impact. So I believe that we have addressed all of the concerns which were raised at the initial meeting on May 19th. At this point, I'll let Chris come up and go through the revisions to the site plan in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Chris Shea. I'm a registered professional engineer with DePreet Engineering of Two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. What I provided, paper copies, is just my presentation this evening condensed to the outstanding issues that Attorney Geary just went through. The first sheet in the set is the site plan, which the main revision to the site plan is along Montreal Street. Everything from Plain Street back is the same as what you had seen last time. What we did was, in addressing the fire department's concerns for fire access, they wanted essentially a looped road counterclockwise around the site. So we still, when we did that, we were able to accommodate that. We had to make a few adjustments to the locations of utilities, transformer pads, dumpsters, but we were able to accommodate that request. And as Attorney Geary mentioned, we did get approval, at least verbally, on that issue. You can, and we ended up with exactly the same number of parking spaces because, as I noted, the main change is along Montreal Street. So we have still 13 parking spaces for the Chipotles and 30, I kind of combined them together, 30 total parking spaces at Starbucks and Popeyes. And the reason I did that is because the Popeyes really only needs about four or five spaces for employees, leaving roughly 25 spaces for Starbucks. But I think the agreement with Starbucks might be a little less than that. Obviously, as we discussed last hearing, Starbucks, the ebb and flow, Starbucks is heavily trafficked in the morning. The Popeyes and the Chipotles would be more of an afternoon-evening. And so we think the sheer parking of 30 is more than enough for Starbucks. And five, you know, 30 total, 25 for Starbucks and five for Popeyes. The second sheet actually shows in red, kind of a crosshatch, the movements of the fire truck through the site. As you can see, the red outline on the outside is the body. There's only one or two areas where that body crosses over the curbing. In that case, the landscaping has been revised to make sure that there are no shrubs or trees that would interfere with the truck body going over the curbing. But the wheels, the wheelbase all stays within the pavement. And then the next, the third sheet is the landscape plan. And again, as Attorney Geary mentioned, our landscape architect worked with the city staff to come up to develop a landscape plan that removed invasive trees, added more shade trees, added more trees and shrubs in general to the project. We have 11 deciduous trees, shade trees along Plain Street. We have somewhere in the ballpark of, I think, 14 trees within the fringes of the site and the interior. And we have a cluster of over 30 evergreen trees along Montreal Street and along the retaining wall that abuts the private property, our abut on Tanner Street. So we think this satisfies the city staff's requirements on landscaping. And then the last item was related to our closed drainage system. As I had noted before, a vast majority of the stormwater runoff from the impervious areas of the site is being infiltrated. We have an underground infiltration system. I've identified those in yellow rectangles on the plan. The overflow from that system, which is pretty much zero, plus a small portion of the Chipotle's parking lot, so a small flow of stormwater is directed into Plain Street. That's far less than what goes into Plain Street today. It goes out of the existing VFW driveway and runs in the gutter line down towards Tanner Street. We've reduced overall the volume and rate of runoff to Plain Street, but now we're connecting into a drain manhole at the intersection of Plain Street and Tanner Street and extending a drain line up to our site to make that connection. You can see that on the last sheet. I've given you kind of a little bit more broad overview. You can see our project towards the left side of the plan. To the right, at the, you can see the intersection of Tanner and Plain. That's where the drainage manhole is, and the dashed line that you see is the extension of a closed drainage pipe up to our site. With that, I think we have addressed all of the main comments. There were minor things like incorporating an oil-water separator into the operation and maintenance plan, and we'd be happy to have that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we continue to believe that we meet all the criteria for issuance of the special permit relative to this application, as well as meeting all the criteria for site plan approval. We're here, we're happy to answer any questions or try to address any concerns that the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll open up to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'm opening up to board members. They have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
First, I want to compliment you on the changes you made to the site plan because there were all the elements we were talking about at the prior meeting. So that goes a long way because it never fails to amaze me when people come before us and we give recommendations and they don't make the changes. So you moved the crosswalk really to service the Starbucks, which we talked about. And if you could just explain a little bit, though, you mentioned the impact of Montreal Street, but I did notice the "no-through" traffic sign at the end of the site heading on Eaton Street. So is that...
Where is it, Mr. Froschette, that you're referring to?
So if you look at the site plan, and you go down Eaton Street from Plain Street, and you're just about ready to turn on the Montreal, it looks like it has, it notes a sign that says "no-through" traffic sign.
Fran, could I have that plan to your right?
Is that the one that was from the city? Or is that the one that they put on?
It's on the site.
Yeah, so that was not, as Chris just indicated to me, that was not a change from the last plan. So it might have been a comment that got carried over from the 2023 approvals. You know, that sign, you know, so that is what we are proposing.
Okay. Because I, that's why I was concerned about the minutes, because I don't think it was going to capture it, but I wanted to see what the plan had, and I had mentioned that. Because I think there was some discussion, it may not have gotten captured, but I think there was an attempt to try to minimize the traffic going through onto Montreal Street. And I actually liked that until you mentioned you weren't going to address it, but it looks like it was addressed within the plan.
Right. Yeah, no, that is on the plan.
And I'm assuming in DPD, Fran, Traffic has reviewed this, and they're comfortable with this plan that looking at?
How recently was this version submitted?
The site plan was, the revised site plan was submitted last Wednesday.
Okay.
But the, no... Yeah, so the original submission was in March, and then there was no change to any of that portion of the site plan since the May 19th hearing, since March.
Because I'm comfortable with approving that with that signage. I just want to make sure that...
And we're comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, okay. I mean, you know the way that's going to work. There's going to be a certain percentage of people that still go through there, but it should keep the more honest folks from doing that. And to your point, I have the plan from the prior meeting, and it is on. I just wanted to make sure we follow that through. Okay. No, I just, I think the, I can see the subtle changes that were made for the sweep path analysis. And so I'm really pleased. I appreciate having the comment name for the plants that are in the landscape plan. We've had issues with that in the past. I did take a look at that, and I think, I know there was some suggesting, suggested language for conditions, and I just want to make sure we're on the same page here. On the staff comment letter, item number six, it says that the intersection of Plain Street and Lowell Connector, MB Rams, the operation of the intersection is not projected to notably change with the addition of the new project traffic during peak hours studied. The TIA commits to the design and implementation of an optimal traffic signal, timing, phasing, and coordination plan by the applicant at this intersection. This recommendation is appropriate and should be a condition of approval.
Correct. We are agreeable to incorporating all of those traffic mitigation measures.
Which were incorporated... Which were incorporated in the TIA, right?
Correct.
And I know you incorporated the do-not block on Plain Street, the do-not, which was also mentioned in here and incorporated.
Yeah, so there was a letter that I submitted from Jeff Durk dated May 15th that basically summarizes it all, and that's, you know, that incorporates, we basically indicate that we are agreeable to all of the city's transportation engineers' mitigation measures, which she, you know, we had suggested a lot of mitigation measures, which she agreed upon, and then she came back with some additional mitigation measures, and we agreed upon those as well. And that's what Jeff's letter reflects.
Right. I've got Jeff's letter from May 15th, is that correct? So that's the, the items two, four, five, and six that he mentioned, so...
Correct.
From the TIA.
engineers. I just want to make it clear, we received the letter from the traffic engineer that summarized our traffic study with numerous measures that we identified that should be implemented. There were four additional measures that they identified, and Jeff's letter says that those four additional measures that she, that they identified, number two, four, five, and six from their letter, we also agree to implementing. So we've agreed to every measure that's been suggested from either VAI or from the city.
Okay, so everything that is in the transportation impact assessment and the items that the city traffic engineer had cited?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. Make it easier to just condition it upon incorporating all of those items. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Frichette. Mr. Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Gary, I appreciate what you and everyone has done with this plan. Obviously, there was the concern for the firetruck getting through. That was the major emphasis for changing this site plan, so I appreciate it. I mentioned the last time that I was worried about parking. Interestingly, when I see this plan, some of that worry does go away, because I see how the cars are going to be queued up, and I'm looking at 10 in a queue, 13 in a queue, and 10 in a queue, and that alleviates some of my concerns as far as parking, based on the fact that there looks like there's a significant area where these cars can be out of the way and parking can be had. I also took into account that the fact that you, you mentioned Popeyes is basically going to be a drive-thru. You're not going to need much parking.
It is a drive-thru only.
You're going to need basically employees, maybe five.
Four or five.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. So I think that's helpful. I also considered, over the last couple of weeks, you responded by saying that these businesses know what they're doing. And I took that to heart in the sense that, you know, you've got a Starbucks, you've got a Chipotle, you've got a Popeyes, these people don't randomly put up places. Everything is guided, studied, they have a habit, they have a procedure, they know what works, they know what doesn't work. So I'm relying on some of that, based on their knowledge, to alleviate my parking concerns. I like the fact that the "no-through" traffic sign onto Montreal, I think that does, as you mentioned, the study indicates that there will be very few trips through that, that's what your study indicates. But also, in putting a sign out there, I think can only help the neighbors there. Love the shade trees, the landscape looks great, that's much appreciated. Also appreciate the reduced runoff on Plain Street. There's only so much you can do, based on what you're trying to do, so I do appreciate that. So I'm looking at this like, you know, we have a chance to get businesses here, and you can't just look at the negative, you've got to look at what's the positive out of this. And the positive is three new businesses and hopefully taxes for the city.
And employment for city residents.
And employment as well, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Lucia, any comments, questions?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions, comments? No? Okay. I don't have any concern with the traffic layout and the parking due to the fact that you agree with everything that transportation engineer says, and Jeffrey Dirck does too. So those are the experts in the field, so I have no concerns. And once you said, yeah, we agree with her and Jeff, I agree too. Obviously, I think those satisfy any question that I would have had. I'd like to see the new plans. I think you adequately addressed the questions that we had in the last meeting. All the other stuff that we did hash out. And I know you said you were willing to take, I had conditional approval with the recommendations from the transportation engineer. And I think it's, the plan is nicely submitted today. I mean, it's nice to see the flow of the traffic, I mean, for the fire department. We'd be forward to the question about whether it was going to go up on the burn or the curb or whatever, the new plan here. And that you indicated has been approved by the fire department, so that they didn't have any concerns, I believe, in the landscaping plan. When staff talked about that last time, did a good job of implementing that, so I have no concerns. Thank you. So I believe what we're looking for, if I'm reading my agenda correctly, is one site plan and two special permits?
Correct.
We have the one site plan, one special permit for the drive-thru, and the other special permit for the reduced parking. So the board will make a decision on three votes, on three requests, I should say, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the condition as indicated by the applicant, that they will agree to all the transportation reviews that were done by a transportation engineer and all of her comments, as well as the comments that were received to us by Mr. Dirk from Ben Hazen Associates. I believe by looking at the comments we received by staff, I believe most of the comments have been updated since the last meeting, which was the fire department, and indicated, you say that was approved by them when they saw the sweet path, though. That's no longer a concern. And I think, they talked about before, which I think we took care of, was the freeze trap, so that wasn't no longer a concern. Just seeing if there's anything else that jumps out from staff. The landscaping plan has been perfected. Yeah, so I think the only condition I would have would be the traffic discussion from further board members. Include anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just specifically just note the traffic engineer's memo, the date of the memo...
And Jeff's memo.
Of May, Jeff's memo of May 15th, and the traffic engineer's memo of May 13th.
All right, so I'll make that motion with the conditions, the approval as it to have indicated by the traffic engineer and by Mr. Dirk.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor for the site plan, motion second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. No, having any opposition? Hearing none? The site plan is approved. Moving along, for the special permit for the drive-thru, I will make a motion to approve with the same conditions as outlined in the site plan.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, yes, obviously. Opposition, hearing none? The special permit for the drive-thru is approved. Next matter would be the special permit for the reduced parking. I'll make a motion to approve with the same conditions as set out in the site plan and the special permit for the drive-thru.
I'll second that, Mr...
Second by Lucia? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries. So the site plan, the two special permits have been approved. Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a public shade tree hearing. The public shade tree hearing, 1650 Middlesex Street, Hadley Park, and in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances, the Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of a one-three-inch caliber tree at Hadley Park, 1650 Middlesex Street. The tree removal is necessary for the renovation and expansion of the playground. The planting plan proposes three new trees. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Brianna Martinez. I'm a design planner. I manage park and open space projects at the city. I'm here tonight seeking one tree removal permit for Hadley Park, which is one of our ARPA park improvement projects. This tree removal is necessary for the expansion and the upgrades in the playground area, and part of those improvement upgrades include the addition of three new trees in the play area. And just to give some clarity on this situation, the tree that we need to remove was not identified on the existing site condition survey, which is why it was identified so late into construction, and that's why we're here tonight looking for the tree removal permit.
Thank you. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the tree removal? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Thank you for the packet and showing us the pictures. It made it easier to find the tree when I went to Hadley Park, because it's a pretty big park, I know it well. And when I saw that, the picture of the construction van, I knew where it was, and I was pretty amazed to see the big hole in one little tree there. I thought that thing would have been long gone. I thought they just would have kept working. But, so I'm in favor of the removal. Any of the board members have any comments?
I just say, Mr. Chairman, I'll give the workers credit for respecting the tree ordinance, because under other circumstances, I think that would have just been removed. And I was almost a little embarrassed when I got out there to look at it, I was like, oh my God, you know, and they dug around it. So respecting the process, which I do want to recognize that, though, so obviously in favor of it. Thank you.
Any comments over here?
Yeah, just a couple. I would echo some of the things that have been said. It is important that we do take this seriously, and obviously, the contractors took this seriously, because it's weird looking at this single little, little tree in the middle of a construction war zone. But I also think one of the other things is, obviously, you're putting three new trees up, that's fantastic. And by the way, only one is required, I believe, by our tree ordinance, so that's fantastic. But I would also say that the city and the contractors should be commended for the work that they're doing. I mean, they're doing work down at Clemente, they're doing work at Hadley. It's incredible, I mean, how much work is being done and how great this is going to be, and it'll be a great resource for the citizens in the Highlands, or if the other parts of the...
Sure.
Want to come over.
And anybody else who visits that area?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, great job, I'm for this.
Lucia, any questions? Comments? No? Lucia, any questions? Comments? No? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? The tree removal is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along on the agenda...
Mr. Chairman, before you get started, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Okay, so we have, the next matter is a site plan review and special permit, 534-556 Chumsford Street. Lowell Central Electric Company, Inc., has applied to the Lowell Planting Board for a site plan review and special permit approval to construct an 80-unit residential development at the above address. The property is located in the suburban neighborhood multifamily zoning district and requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4.22 to construct a development with more than three dwelling units, and a special permit under 6.7 for proposed driveway dimensions. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Chairman Linehan, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Board, good evening. For the record, my name is Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent John Maria, who is the president of Lowell Central Electric Company. Mr. Maria is here this evening. Lowell Central Electric is a family business, employs about 50 people in the greater Lowell area. They've been in business since the 1950s, so very well-established, and they've owned most of this property, at least some of this property, on Chumsford Street for many years. They own the property, 534-556 Chumsford Street. We are requesting permission to build 80 units of new housing on what is 83,000 square feet of vacant land. The units would be spread over three buildings and would be a great addition, we think, to this neighborhood. The, a little bit of history on the property, some of you may remember this, we were in front of the Planning Board last year, because we requested the Planning Board to recommend to the council a zoning change. This property was zoned regional retail, and we asked that it be changed to suburban multifamily. The Planning Board unanimously last year recommended the changing the zoning, and the city council, shortly thereafter, unanimously approved the zoning change. This property, at least part of this property, was in tax title for many, many years with the city. And when it came out of tax title, back, I believe it was 2023, there was an RFP that the city put out. Mr. Maria answered the RFP with a proposal such as this, which would be housing. It was accepted. And back in 2024, the end of last year, Mr. Maria bought the property from the city for $480,000, which is a portion of this property. Couple of things which really make this project attractive, I think. One is obviously new housing in the city, which clearly the city needs, new vibrant housing in a neighborhood that could certainly use it, on a vacant, not underutilized piece of property, but not utilized piece of property, totally vacant. And we need a site plan review, because we're requesting more than three units, dwelling units on a single piece of property, and a special permit for the driveway dimensions. The other part of this is that the Lowell Housing Authority owns the property to the rear of this property. They own the property adjacent to this property, and there's housing units there now. The property in the rear off, if you came in Chumsford Street, all the way back, the Housing Authority owns that property. Currently, they use it for storage only, but they hope, they're hopeful that down the road, they could use it for housing, to put more housing in what is another desperate need. We have met with the executive director of the Housing Authority, as well as the attorney, Kevin Murphy, and have come to an agreement to allow an access easement if and when the Housing Authority wants to develop that in the back. And so that's in play, and it's all been agreed to, really, and we have a letter from the Housing Authority that was in the file back when we requested the zoning change back in, back on September 30th, 2024, from the executive director of the Housing Authority, supporting this proposal. You think it'd be a really good... We think it'd be a really good proposal for the city, as I said. And we look at the memo from the, from DPD staff dated May 22nd, which kind of summarizes the project. And, and there's really, as you'll see, I'm sure you have it in your file, I'm sure you've read it. There's, there's nothing negative in this memo at all. It, number, the, the second point, the board should note, the project is located in walking distance to many essential services, including pharmacy, realit-- retail and restaurants. The, the, the board should note, the application includes a transportation demand management, which has been reviewed by the transportation engineer, and his comments are, I think on page four here. And we don't have any problem with any of those issues. Snow storage and waste management, we will revise the plan to, to show those. The landscaping plan, which the, the board, the staff talked about. We have submitted a landscaping plan to, to, to the, to DPD. And we obviously have no issue with final approval of the landscaping plan by, by DPD staff. The fence is going to come out, the chain link fence, that's a concern number six. And I think we're, Matt can talk about that in a minute. I think we're putting a sort of a white fence in place of the chain link fence. On the second page of the comments, the fire department comments, they wanted to see a, a sweat path analysis, which we submitted last Thursday, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday, which they have approved. And Francesca has seen that, and they have approved that, that sweat path analysis. The transportation demand management plan has issues in there that we have no, no issues with at all. Concerns that they brought up that, that are fine with us. The water department comments pertaining to service and fire service lines, they must, must be tapped separately at the main. We'll do that, clearly it's not an issue. And so I think the concerns that have been brought up by the city, both at the, at the zoning board of appeals, last Thursday, we were at the zoning board of appeals, they approved this unanimously for the variances. And so we're here this evening, hoping that, that the planning board will, will also give us approval, so we can go forward on this very exciting plan. As I said, this, this helps the Lowell Housing Authority, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to increase tax revenue dramatically to the city. It's going to add units to the housing stock, which, which we really need. Going to allow people to, to stay in the city or move into the city, who otherwise might not be able to. So we think it's a very, very good plan. Again, Matt is here, Matt Hammer, go over the, the engineering of it. And also, we have a, a video that shows the project, and it shows it quite well, I think. So we're glad to answer any, any questions you may have. Thank you very much for your attention.
Mr. Cox, if I just ask one, if you don't mind? So I know you got, you indicated you got the approval from the zoning board of appeals, did they give any conditions on the approvals, or?
Yes, there were some conditions, I, I, I don't have it written for me, but I'm sure Francesca does.
Yes, they condition, it was the recommendation, recommended condition of having DPD approve the final landscaping plan.
So, so theirs was the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
That was the sole
Okay.
Uh, condition of approval.
It was the only one? And I, indicate that you accepted that, no problem?
Happy to do it.
Happy to, okay. Thank you. I'll let you proceed, thank you. You said, if I'm Matt next, it, yeah.
Good evening, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm going to play a video, which is a drive-through architectural video. Is it in here?
No, no problem, take your time. No, no problem. Yeah, no problem. Whatever it takes there, it's up to speed, yeah.
So sorry, those are just agendas. Thank you, sir.
Can we take a look back here?
Yeah, here can be watched better.
Yeah.
I was saying, all this bonus is back up here, what's been seen here, I didn't listen. I didn't, I didn't remember. Yeah, I mean, he said, I was gonna pull, I didn't see. That's why it's good to ask, and get on the record. Yeah, it's like, it's like, we said nothing else to go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
If they put a suitcase out there, and you can change on the site plan. You know, it's not like you put a hideout at the end of the location. Yeah, yeah. You know, they say, based on the state, move the whole building.
You have to make sure we don't get back to.
So that's why I like this, help, sweet button. I'm trying to hit the email on my phone, okay? I didn't remember seeing this. Yeah.
Yep. Trying to do full screen. Yeah, you're good. Trying to do full screen, but it's not letting me, is that okay? Okay.
Thank you, Francesca. Okay, so this is a, a rendering done by Gavin and Sullivan Architects, Lowell, Mass. This is the entrance as you're coming into the project from Chelmsford Street. Coming in on the left is a, the first four-story, 24-unit building. On the right is the second four-story, 24-unit building. Parking out front. And in the rear, that's a five-story, 32-unit building. This is bringing you down the access drive. Parking on the right and the left. Each building has at-grade parking underneath each of the three buildings. And this gives you a nice perspective of the buildings relational to the Lowell Housing Authority buildings in the background. The maintenance building for the Lowell Housing Authority, as well the, as well as the adjacent residential structures in the neighborhood. That's the Lowell Housing Authority property at the end. So that's nice to be able to have that, to get a perspective of going through the project. The existing property is currently, has a building on the property, which is the, the prior Lowell Electric Building that was located on the property. They've since moved up to another location on Chelmsford Street, but that building is still there being utilized. There's a series of additional properties within the site that were acquired over the course of some time, as well as the property that was additionally acquired by the city of Lowell. Adjacent is Quimby Avenue, of which there are five residential properties located adjacent to the property. And as I've said, on the other side of the property is encompassed by Lowell Housing Authority properties. The project essentially requires 180 spaces. Excuse me, 160 spaces. There's 118 spaces provided. As Attorney Cox had briefly described, the, the zoning board of appeals had granted us a variance for those parking spaces in conjunction with the traffic demand plan, which outlines adjacent public transportation, numerous nearby places where people can walk to those facilities. The, there was also a variance granted for the height of the buildings relational to the, the need because of the parking garage and the housing above it. Each building was granted a variance in terms of height. We got a, the DPD comments letter also provided a need or a want for a full landscaping plan. We've submitted a portion of that landscaping plan, which you have before you, it's not completely finished. But we wanted to show the zoning board of appeals and the planning board that we've hired a landscape architect, who's fully been designing the, the landscaping on the site, and will have that completed this week, of which will be reviewed by the DPD department as per the condition of the prior zoning board of appeals conditions as well. You'll notice that there's, it's a very robust landscaping plan, which is going to be needed, because there's a considerable amount of open space on this property, in fact. When you look at the site rendering plan, you'll notice there's a lot of green on the property. The buildings have been situated so that they're on the opposite side of the property to the nearby residences on Quimby. And there also, there's ample amount of green space between the building in the front to Chelmsford Street as well. So there's a lot of area to work with for the landscape architect, and I think the board will find that it'll be nicely landscaped when it's completed. As far as snow storage, we have plenty of snow storage on the property. So we are confident that we can label those additionally to satisfy that comment. There's also concrete pads for trash storage, as well as areas for bicycle rack areas as well. As I said, each of the buildings has at-grade parking within the building as well, which is going to be a nice amenity for the project. And I also should add that there are sidewalks that bring residents out to Chelmsford Street on either side of the project, in order for there to be full accessibility for pedestrians out to the sidewalks out on Chelmsford Street as well. And I can put it over to Attorney Cox.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, the LRTA is very active in that area, and, and that's why the sidewalks are so important, to get people from, from the project out, out to Chelmsford Street, to get buses or what have you, you know?
Anything further?
No, all right.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, I'll open the hearing up to the public. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? In favor, in favor, in favor, hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Douglas Housler, representing the owner of Fort Quimby Avenue, which is Corey Steeplejack's LLC. Corey Steeplejack's acquired the property that is along Quimby Avenue, it's on two different elevations. Quimby Avenue is the, the main level for the building, but behind it, and down one length, one, one full height, is a garage, a bay. And has been used historically for access coming through this property, when it was known as Grace Avenue on the city maps. My client has asked for access to, maintain access to that back portion of its building. So far, the applicant has not agreed to do that. I do have a couple of questions I'd like to ask through the chair to the applicant, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you, and through the chair.
Yeah.
My first question was going to be if you received a variance for height, if you eliminated one story of, or one floor of the apartments, would you still require a height variance?
Attorney Housler, you were at the ZBA meeting the other day, you heard all the discussion, I'm, I'm not going to go over what the ZBA said.
Just asking to ask the question.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can ask, but you know.
You're not going to answer.
I don't see any need to.
Okay.
We have a variance.
So we can't even get basic information, as you can see. And that's not appropriate, but this is a public hearing where we're supposed to be able, as an abutter, to receive the information, to understand it, and then to make a determination whether or not we're going to want to appeal things or not. So
And that was a condition, and that was approved by the zoning board of appeals?
I, I understand.
Okay.
But again, it's something for your board to consider, the height is also part of the site plan review process.
I understand.
And I would hope that you would want to know what the height would be if it was, a variance was not necessary. If this project could be built with just three stories of apartments, not four, would it even require a variance? I had asked that the board consider that. The second item was the floor area ratio. That was also granted a variance, and my question through the board to the applicant would be, would in fact, the floor area ratio still need a variance if the top floor of these three buildings was eliminated?
Mr. Chairman, again, I'm going to say, Attorney Housler was here the other night, he could have asked the ZBA those, those questions. He did not, I don't know why he's doing it tonight. And, and further, I, we'll go into a little bit further. The hearing with the, with the ZBA was 6:30 Thursday evening. Attorney Housler called me at 2:00 Thursday afternoon to tell me he had an interest in this, and he was representing an abutter. Then he came here Thursday night, and he said he didn't want to delay it, he just wanted time to talk to, to us or the engineer. And after the meeting, we went outside, and I spoke to Attorney Housler. I told him, look, I, I don't know, we, we will, we'll be happy to talk about it. And that's where we stand. He didn't call me today, I haven't talked to him today. I was going to talk to him after the meeting this evening, and tell him, we, we have talked to the applicant, Matt and I, and, and we expect to, to have some further discussions. So for him to say, you know, we're not, we're not cooperating with them, we're not giving any information, is really not true. I told him after the meeting last week that we would talk, and, and that's where it stands. Thank you.
And so we're also clear that my client had requested some of this information six-plus months ago. Had approached the owner and counsel for the applicant, and was told that access was not going to be granted. My entrance into this mess, I call it, is a result of that unwillingness to date to consider my client's request for access. Perhaps it could be resolved before an appeal period expires, so that we don't have to file a suit challenging any of the special permits that are issued, or the variances that are issued. We always open to dialogue, that's what we're hoping to do. My client's primary concern is just simple access. The applicant is more than willing to provide, and in fact detailed, a beautiful access way to the Lowell Housing Authority. My client is simply looking for a single access point to a garage that's affecting half of the value of his property, most likely. It's, it cannot be accessed in any way from Quimby. It, the, the height differential is just too great. It's literally like almost 15 to 20 feet lower. So it has to go through this area. And I do want to remind the board that this has been an area that was open to everybody for decades. I have at least seven to eight affidavits from abutters that said that property has been used. I believe it's an implied easement, they may not agree, and that's what courts are for, and I understand that, I don't wear the robes. I don't wear the robes. But we will bring, if we can't get to an accommodation, that's where we're going to wind up. I'd like to avoid it. I'd like to see the board encourage the applicant to perhaps reconsider its unwillingness to date, to grant a simple access point. They've made a huge access point for the Lowell Housing Authority. I'm not aware of any other abutter has asked for access anywhere within the project, so we're probably talking about one to two parking spaces. The other reason for my questions about the variance criteria before this board as well is with respect to, if you don't have all those apartments on the fourth floor for all three buildings, which I believe are the same height, the number of parking spaces get reduced dramatically, and it could open up some space to provide access. That's the link behind it all. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. If I may just address that. You know, if Attorney Housler stand here and say, "We are not willing to talk," is false. He knows it. Matt knows it. John Maria knows it. I know it. We told them last week we would discuss it. This was Thursday night. It's now Monday night. Isn't that true, Mr. Housler? It's not true? I didn't tell you? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Joseph Tarmey, and I live on Quimby Avenue, which runs along the proposed development. One of my biggest concerns was possible contamination of that area. In 1954, the Chelmsford Fuel and Transportation Company was granted permits to store 10,000 gallons of fuel on that site, and it was there for approximately 20 years. Those tanks are long gone, and the area is empty, but I'm concerned if maybe it'd be irresponsible, I think that maybe there might have been a leak at one time or another, is that sampling of that soil. And I spoke with Francesca, and I spoke with Sarah Brown, and I found disturbing information that they can just start excavating without sampling first. Then all that dirt is sent out to be checked to see if they can continue it. By then, it's too late. If it is contaminated, you've already released what could possibly be contaminations into the air. So I propose that before they begin to excavate, some type of soiling sampling be done there, maybe core drill four, six, eight, even deeper into the ground before you start tearing up something that could be hazardous to that neighborhood's health. My second problem was with traffic. Was a traffic study done? And I don't have a fancy device that I can show you up on the screen, but I do have pictures on my phone that will show you a hampered traffic situation at any given time, especially during peak hours, early morning when everyone's leaving and everyone coming home. It is not possible to go through those lights at the intersection of Chelmsford Street and Pine Street through one light cycle. You have to wait two cycles most times. To get in and off of Quimby Avenue, you have to go by the lights, even though there's no lights for those, to get out there. And I have pictures to show you that that happens as well. The housing does not need access to that. They already come out at the bottom, they already have an access in and out of Quimby Avenue at the bottom of that, where they're proposing an access for the housing to get in at the bottom of what is now Grace Avenue. The housing already has access to do that. They use Quimby Avenue. But if you take Grace Avenue, which is there, and continue it down into the housing, the way out is not into the housing parking lot. It is to go left onto Quimby Avenue, the bottom of Quimby Avenue. Quimby Avenue is an L. You go onto Quimby Avenue. Now cars leaving that every day, you go to work, is going to use that to go off Quimby Avenue, and Quimby Avenue is only wide enough for one car. There's no sidewalks. Two cars can't pass on it. That's going to cause a lane, and you can't get on Chelmsford Street. You have to wait for a light cycle. So this traffic, so to say that, adding 80 to possibly 100 more vehicles, not to mention all the construction vehicles that are going in and out there while this is done, is not going to create a, hamper an already congested traffic thing? That's irresponsible to suggest that. My last concern is real estate value. All the houses on Quimby Avenue are one and a half story, century-old houses. They're beautiful. They're charming. Yeah, they're old. You've got to take care and put a Band-Aid on every now and then, but the backyard is to put this five-story and four-story buildings that have no charm, that all these houses in what should be an historic part of Lowell, because 12 Quimby Avenue is only 44 years younger than the city of Lowell, when it was incorporated as a city. Now you're going to put these five-story and four-story buildings right in our backyards, which again, is going to cause major traffic problems that already exist, and I can show them on my phone, because I've been taking pictures for the last two and a half weeks. It's just not feasible to think that that's not going to be a major headache and a major problem. But my biggest concern would be the contamination. Can we sample that soil first before we go digging it all up to make sure that it's not going to cause, while I'm mowing my lawn, because I'm right there, that back building is going to be right here in my backyard? While I'm mowing my lawn, tending to my garden, feeding my bird feeders, while you're digging that up, you're not jeopardizing my health. Those are the three biggest concerns I have at this time, and I'm sure it's going to get worse as it goes down the road with this development. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Anybody else?
If I may...
Anybody else? Attorney Cox, I'll let you respond to...
Very briefly just to respond to some of Mr. Tarmey's comments. He was here at the zoning board of appeals meeting the other night as well. First of all, as you see from the DPD memo of May, on like the fourth page, historic board comments, the project is not located with any of the Lowell Historic Review Districts. The homes may be old, but they're clearly not historical in any sense. As far as the 21E report, we have filed one with the city. It was filed, I believe, today or yesterday. It must have been today. Today's Monday, with the city. I'm sure Francesca will talk to that if you ask her. And there is no access. I think that's a gated street in the back there where the housing authority is. So there's no, there would be no access from that area. The only access, if they do develop, will be through our access. And as I said last week, as far as attorneys, Housler's comments about easements, there are venues for that. Land court, Superior Court. The planning board, I don't believe, is a venue to decide whether there's an easement here or not. Obviously, Mr. Maria totally disagrees with that statement, with Attorney Housler's position. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is the housing where they're proposing their access to. This is the end of Quimby Avenue. The housing uses this right here. This is their access to that property. They don't need this gate. They can go down Quimby Avenue all they want. There is a gate there, but it opens at 6:00 in the morning, stays on their tone 6:00 at night, but they use that. It has to be this way already. This is Quimby. This is Grace. I have pictures of cars lined up from this intersection all the way back to here on a regular basis in the morning during peak hours of work, and at nighttime, when you come down the street, turn in the traffic control, it's impossible, because it has a line up from here to there. So to suggest that 80 more cars possibly being, it's not going to burden the traffic, everybody coming this way is now going to use this to go out, beat this line around Chelmsford Street, which is going to create a big traffic at the bottom of Quimby Avenue. And it's irresponsible to not realize that that's going to happen when you have 80 plus more vehicles on this property. So again, I suggest maybe the traffic study be done, and maybe somehow change a light cycle to ease that traffic if possible, maybe create a, so this is maybe a runway so that they can use that to go. This is the property I live here. When I leave, when I go home, I put Chelmsford Street back to this way, because it is impossible to take a right and try to go this way because they have a line up from here to back to there. So to suggest that that's going to be a traffic issue is, is, is clearly irresponsible.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? That portion of the hearing is closed at this point. I'll turn it over to the board members. Yes. Sure. Just come to the microphone, sir. Yeah. Just give us your name and address again, please. Thank you.
John Maria, Lowell Central Electric, 182 Chelmsford Street. I just wanted to clarify the, abutters' concerns with that. When we came up with this proposal and the housing authority approached us, my biggest concern personally was that the access road, access we're granting the housing authority would not become a cut-through to get people to the connector. And that's part of our discussion, completely discussion with the housing authority, that this is access to a future development building or whatever for the housing authority. It's not providing a cut-through access across the bottom of Quimby to the Lowell connector. And the reason they were asking for access through our property is because the present access they have at the bottom of Quimby into the garage is an undersized driveway, and that's not large enough for them to permit a development with traffic for residents and fire trucks. So that's why they asked us to help them out with the... So I just want to clarify that, that this is in no way going to be a cut-through provision for commuters. And it is gated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so that's going to be a gated access. So at the end of the drive, there'll be a gate there to allow emergency vehicles to go in and out through that gate if need be, as well as the housing authority if need be. But it's not for free-flowing traffic.
Matt, can you just explain the 21E, basically, at the general... I know for this oil, I have some knowledge about it, but if you could for the public record, please.
Yeah, so at the last, the zoning board of appeals meeting, it was requested whether a 21E Phase 1 assessment was done on the property. One has been done. It's a lengthy document. I think it was over 600 pages long that was provided to the DPD department this morning.
So...
It's a very large document. So...
Well, after they get the copy, they review it and then respond back?
Essentially, what that document tells you is that there was no contamination on the property to have it go to another stage, if there was, okay? The other thing is, is we've conducted a number of test holes on the property for the drainage system, which was witnessed by the city of Lowell's stormwater team. Mr. Gordon Bergeron was witnessing those holes. So I think we did approximately four, maybe five, test holes in and around the property to ensure that the drainage system would function as it's designed. And that's completely separate from the environmental report, but it does give you an indication that when we dug down six to eight feet, there was nothing in the way of any contamination that we saw through those holes, but that was not part of the Phase 1 assessment.
So basically, you knew filed the plan, the state's going to review it, and the state comes in and finds out there's contamination, they tell you to stop and move?
Could you say that again?
So when you filed the 21E, the state reviews that, right?
Yeah, we did not file it.
No. But it'll be filed, right?
Essentially, what that does is it gives the property owner the comfort of knowing that the entire history of the property is being analyzed by an environmental engineering firm. They do the necessary testing that's necessary and the research to provide these reports to ensure that the property is essentially sufficient enough to be redeveloped. Okay? During construction, if something arises during construction, there's a whole methodology to be processed through, whatever that may be, through the, what they call the MCP, which is the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, which is a function of essentially Mass DEP in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that would govern anything that would be discovered at that time during construction, because as we know, anything can happen during construction, but there's an entire process for that. In no way would this development be developed knowing that there's contamination on the property. Essentially, the majority of the property is going to be excavated in order to develop the property.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, at this point in time, any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure. Mr. Fischette?
First of all, on the 21E, I have a lot of history with those reports, and also they're checking the state and the federal records for any reported spills. And then, as Mr. Hammer commented, is that they look at the history, if there was a tannery that was functioning on there at some point, and whether or not it would warrant any further investigation or test holes. And that is something typically a buyer who's past financing would be required to have, and then that is usually submitted to the lender, and then, so I mean, that's, from that perspective, this would not be, a site like this, I would imagine, would not go forward without a 21E, and that doesn't surprise me. Also, before us, a special permit first this evening is for the length of the driveway. So all the items that were brought up here this evening, that was really, all of those were presented as variances at the zoning board of appeals last week. And then looking at site plan review. Site plan review, and the reason you have special permits, you know, site plan review does not give a planning board a lot of teeth, right? I mean, we've got the layout of what the requirements are, location and dimensions of all buildings. We've done that. Internal roadways, access to adjacent public roadways, and profile of same if determined to be necessary by the planning board. Location of snow storage areas and trash dumpsters. Could you clarify a little bit, though? You mentioned pads for trash, and I was a little confused as to what you were referencing. Are there dumpsters, or there's, how is the trash going to be handled?
So there's a concrete pad here. With a full fence enclosure on it.
And that's going to be a dumpster?
Yep.
Okay, and then...
There's a full concrete pad here with a fence enclosure.
Okay.
And those are the two locations.
Two locations.
Yep. And then additionally, while we're talking about that, there was a bicycle rack location here.
Now, boy, those are really visible. What type of screening are you going to be using for that?
For the dumpster pad?
The dumpsters.
There'll be a full vinyl fence screen.
So you're going to have the slats through?
No, the white vinyl.
Oh, white vinyl, thank you.
Full white vinyl fence screening.
Yep, that'll look better.
And while we're talking about white vinyl fence, we're going to be putting a white vinyl fence along here and along here.
Yep.
This is going to remain completely open here. We wanted that to all be open from the roadway.
Okay.
Okay? And then this fencing here was going to be replaced with just new chain link fencing.
Now, those are the backyards of all the neighbors. I mean, wouldn't it make sense for the, why do you have white vinyl fencing over here and then just the chain link over here?
I mean, we could do that here if need be.
I would like to see the white vinyl, and that screens the parking for the neighbors in the back, right? Because the parking is right, is right there.
Yep.
Yeah, so that would be white vinyl.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then, and also paths of safe emergency egress from all proposed buildings to public right-of-way. So can you explain a little bit about the gate on the rear of the property abutting the housing authority? How is that going to...
Yes, so... Yes, so... This is a plan that we submitted to the deputy fire chief for the sweat path analysis.
Yep.
So this shows how the fire trucks turn around. This shows that it can make access over here as well to Quimby. There's going to be a gate at the end of the access drive with the Knox box, or whatever the fire department requires, okay? And then, if that technology changes over time, that would also be implemented in the gate as well, like we do for any project that has a breakaway gate.
Okay. So that will ensure that traffic will not be flowing through there?
Yeah, there's going to be no way for traffic to go through this property.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
In fact, we can add a sign that says that there's no through...
No throughway traffic.
Yeah.
I would have no, yep, yep. Okay, and then, the location and dimensions of all parking areas, loading areas, walkways and driveways, which you have on the plan, and you have parking under the, each building and laid out along the internal roadway. Lighting, landscape and lighting, so landscape, you're still finalizing that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, I do like what you propose to date as fairly robust, so that's a good sign if that's still in process there. And the, so the external lighting, can you give us a little idea how that's going to be?
Yeah, we haven't developed a lighting scheme yet.
So that's part of the site plan review?
We could work with DPD on that, that lighting plan. And we'll work with the landscape architect on that as well.
Yep. And then, location type, dimensions, quantities of landscaping and screening, we talked about that, the white vinyl fence, I do want to see that on the other side of that property, which would be the... So we've got north, so I guess it would be on the north, behind the neighbors that are on Quimby, I guess is the best way I want to describe that. Utilities, location, dimension of utilities, including water, surface drainage, sewer, fire hydrants, and other waste disposal, and profile of the same if determined necessary by the planning board. So are there any hydrants on the site? I didn't, is that going to be required, or is...
We're not proposing to put hydrants on the site. If they're required, anything that's required by the water department or the fire department will be implemented in this plan into this project, excuse me. We show full utilities for sewer, water, drainage.
Right, yep.
Throughout the site. Sometimes we put a fire hydrant in for the sake of flushing the water mains.
Are the buildings going to be sprinkled?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because of the size of them, so, yeah. And then, the architectural plans, which you did provide, as well as a, in animated form as well. So that's the requirement of site plan review. And then, you know, maximize pedestrian vehicular safety on the site to the site, egressing from the site. I think that was the biggest concern. I had a concern of the rare, the rare egress, if that was going to be open, clearly. I could see most of the people exiting through Quimby and avoiding all of Chelmsford Street, but that won't happen in this, it can't happen. Go ahead, minimize reasonable departure of character, minimize contamination groundwater, provide access to... So from the perspective of site plan review, I'm satisfied with what's been presented. The special permit is for the length of the driveway. And the big, the biggest concern for that is, we want the input of the fire department and whether or not it's safe access, and you provided the sweat path analysis. All of the buildings are going to be sprinkled, and the fire department has signed off on it. The dimensions of the width of the roadway, Matt, just if you could, just for the record, what is the width of the roadway, the internal roadway?
It's 24 feet.
Yeah, 24 feet, so that's larger than most internal roadways that we would see.
Yeah, so that's on sheet three of five.
Yep.
And that's for what typically is a two-way lane roadway.
Right, right. So, so again, from that perspective, I think it meets the criteria in which we are looking at the special permit. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield to other members. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sauer, any questions?
Yeah, I, you know, I used to live around the corner on Plain Street.
Yeah.
And I cannot imagine how much more traffic. I agree with the gentleman, you know, expresses concern, because in giving any hour, traffic's , you know, horrendous, coming in and out of that place. So I want to see, you know, any way that you can, you know, I mean, find some way at the entrance there, because I cannot imagine, you know, this is...
So let me, you now actually reminded me of a conversation we had a couple of years ago about this project, when this was zoned rural retail, or resi, excuse me, yeah, rural retail.
Regional retail.
Regional retail, excuse me. And there was a whole discussion about what this, how this property would affect the surrounding roadways if it was a mall or some big box store in here. That would have provided a lot more traffic impact than the use that we're proposing now. And that was one of the discussions. I have concept plans showing gas stations and all sorts of different uses of this property. And then, when we went to the residential, to change the zoning and do residential, it was also looked at to be better use of the property and less impactful to the traffic for it to be utilized as residential than the retail use. So just wanted to remind you of some history related to this property and how we got to this point today on that.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, even though that's the case, but I think it's important to, you know, work with the residents, you know, to make sure that they know that they...
Excuse me, sir. No, one at a time, you have the chance to speak, you don't interrupt people speaking, especially board members. Nobody interrupted you. Your apology accepted, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Sauer.
Yes, you know, I mean, I, again, you know, given the experience that I used to live around the corner and knowing, you know, that location, that's my, you know, that's what I want to say, my concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sauer. Lucia, any questions?
Snow removal, can you tell me what the plan is for snow removal?
So, the snow storage will be along this green area here, along these green areas in here. And if there's additional area needed, there could be snow put in, in these areas, but we don't feel as though there'll be needed, this here and over in here. So there's snow storage around the entire perimeter of the property.
And you have no concerns with it affecting the shrubbery or the trees or the...
We don't.
Landscape, okay. That's my only question for now. I have to say, I am concerned that we've not gotten comments back from wastewater or stormwater or engineering. And I feel like it has to do with the timing, because it just went before the ZBA, we had the long weekend. So I think I would be interested in hearing comments, whether they have them or not. It's not that they didn't have a comment, it's that there were no comments received.
So I meet with these folks commonly, on a weekly basis. They have not said anything to me about this project. They have, they were out there when we were doing the soil tests. They have provided a comment that said that they haven't received any comments, but typically a stormwater permit is required before it gets constructed, so that sometimes they provide comments at that stage. But I can assure you that this project has a full drainage system to handle all the drainage on the site, and it's been substantiated with soil testing as well.
Matt, we did receive comments from a transportation engineer. I believe it's the last page of the memo that gives us this staff, and it talks about the transportation demand management plan.
Yes.
Could you just go over that briefly for us, please? I know they had some topics about the transportation and the traffic.
Yep.
And I know she studied that and made some comments, and if you could just go over that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so we, in fact, before we did the zoning change, we wanted to ensure that the city was aware of what the zoning change and how it was going to affect this property. So we did a traffic demand management report that was reviewed by the city before they gave recommendation for the zoning change, because we wanted to make sure that the traffic engineer was not, was going to be agreeable, because we've always had the same layout of the plan, right? So we've always known that it was going to be used for these three buildings. The parking essentially has remained the same, and we prepared a traffic demand management plan, also to help justify the reduction in parking, taking into account that there would be bicycle storage, there would be nearby amenities for public transportation, there's nearby amenities to get to the rail system as well, there's nearby amenities that you don't necessarily need a vehicle to go out and have dinner, or go get things that you may need for your actual living use, for instance, hardware stores, Lowe's is right up the street, and so on and so forth. So that traffic demand management plan outlined this entire project and its effect on the surrounding area and the residents.
So besides the comments for the transportation demand management plan, the traffic engineer had no further comments when he got to the traffic.
That's correct, right.
So that was, came from our traffic engineer, was more just on how to incorporate some of your findings on the transportation demand management plan.
Correct. And all of those comments, we would incorporate into the, essentially, of the construction drawings prior to construction, related to the intersection to Chelmsford Street, and so on and so forth, in her comments.
Because, I mean, some of the comments that she alluded to, I see that are already on the new plan that you submitted to us this evening. I mean, some of the comments that she mentioned, I already, like the bike racks and all that, you've already put...
Yeah, that was already on the plan, yeah.
Which she asked you to do when you did so already, right?
Yep.
And obviously, I mean, you had a question about the sidewalks on Chelmsford Street and stuff of that nature, make sure they ADA compliant.
Correct, yeah.
Which, they'll be on the plan, there'll be no problem with those, the storage, the location, the bikes, and the architectural plan, the welcome packet, and obviously, the site vision, when you come out of Chelmsford Street, so the landscape and snow will be down low enough that people can see, the straight angles should not be conditioned of any approval.
Correct. And if you notice on sheet three, we actually identify the proposed sidewalk improvements with handicap pads and proposed crosswalk striping as well.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So with the request of the board, they have, before us, requests for a site plan approval and a special permit for the length of the driveway.
Mr. Chairman, and before I actually make a motion, I do want to comment that, you know, I am the representative to, the board's representative to Northern Minnesota Council of Governments, and they deal with the tip and the state funding for traffic improvements, and I did reach out to them on this, and I did go to the MassDOT Impact Portal as well to look at high crash areas in the city of Lowell, and as tough as that is over there, that's not in the top, it's not on the top list of intersections in the city of Lowell with high crash areas. Tough spot, I took pictures as well when I was there of the, of the traffic backed up beyond this site, the entire time I was there, and I was there for quite a while. I walked down Quimby, I walked to the back of the site, I actually parked on Avenue C by the, by the park back there. I'm very familiar with the area, I had relatives when I was younger that lived in a housing project that was there, spent a lot of time over there, saw how the, in 1968, there wasn't a lot of cars, in '69, a lot of cars in that housing project, and there's certainly a lot more now. So we have to recognize that, obviously, it's auto oriented today. And I appreciate the traffic demand management plan pointing out a lot of, a lot of alternatives to transportation, but the reality of it is, you know, it is close to the connector, and I think that, you know, it will be auto oriented, there's no question about it. What would I, what I, I do want to ask the applicant, or what I would look to make as a condition, is that to work with the city of Lowell through, for possible design and implementation of optimal traffic signal, timing, phasing, and coordination by the applicant with the city relative to that intersection of Chelmsford and Plain Street. I don't even know if there's anything that can be done, but I, you know, if there's anything, I would, I would ask this applicant to be, be working with the city as part of that process.
If I may, Mr. Fischett, I was going to suggest that we will work with the city and the traffic engineer to try to alleviate those concerns, clearly.
Yeah, I mean, it's factual. I mean, one of the items in the traffic demand management plan is, you know, parking in some of the streets across Chelmsford Street. Holy smokes, the last thing I want to do is, who's going to park across Chelmsford Street? You know, you couldn't, anyways, that's...
We will work, we will work with the city all the way through on that.
Oh, oh, okay.
And happy to make it a condition of approval, that we will continue to work with the city.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the applicant will install a white vinyl fence running along the abutting neighbors on Quimby Street, on the Quimby Street side of the project, up until, I believe it is, that, the, it jogs out, I just want to make sure we've got the proper, Matt, where the, where the, where this chain link fence was going to stop, right at that spot there, so that the, the chain link fence, to replace the chain link fence appearing on the site plan behind the abutters on Quimby Street, to be replaced with a white vinyl fence.
That would be at the corner of...
Okay, great, thank you. A new, a no throughway traffic sign will be installed at the... A new, a no throughway traffic sign will be installed at the end of the internal road abutting the Lowell Housing Authority Highland Parkway. The access to that site from that location, abutting the Lowell Housing Authority, will be a lot, will be a locked gate, only to be opened by, and available for access by emergency vehicles. The final landscaping plan to be approved by DPD. The final lighting plan be approved by DPD, ensuring that no external lights will, will affect any of the abutting properties. Must comply with the, any requirements of the city's Lowell Stormwater Management Team. Work with the city of Lowell for any possible redesign and implementation of an optimal traffic signal, timing, phasing, and coordination plan by the applicant for the intersection of Chemsford Street and Plain Street. All new residents should be provided a welcome packet detailing available public transportation services, bicycle walking alternatives, ride share, commuter coordination, commuter, commuter coordination options, and that the site entrance sign in any plantings should be located outside of the required site triangle for vehicles exiting the site driveway onto Chemsford Street. Maintenance of landscape and snow withdraw, windrows to be below three feet in height within site triangles should be a condition of any approval, so we'd incorporate that as a condition as well.
Yes, so you had a question?
There is no existing chain link fence that they're proposing to replace.
Sir, excuse me, it's the chain link fence that was being proposed on the site plan. They're proposing a chain link fence on this site plan. What I'm saying is replace it with a white vinyl fence.
This is my property, that is a three to four foot drop off, if I have a chain fence on top of my wall. So to add a six foot tall vinyl fence in that position, it only takes about two feet over the, over my wall.
Yeah.
That's this property, go from three feet, it's about eight feet.
So if it's such, that, thank you for pointing that out, that's such a drop, what, what is being used for retaining wall right now, then?
It's just the existing wall that's there.
So I think his intent was basically, we'll get to it.
To screen it, to screen it.
I think his intent was basically to block it from the neighbors.
Provide some, well, provide the parking, the screening for the parking.
Yeah.
Which is part of the site plan review.
Right, so.
Go ahead, Matt.
I just wanted to add one thing, when you, you said about in your list of conditions.
Yes.
We're talking about the ax, the end of the access road to only be used for emergency vehicles.
Correct.
It's also to be used by the Lowell Housing Authority, I just wanted you to add, know that in the.
For future use or use?
Yes, for future use.
For future use.
Yep.
That's, yeah, okay, that's.
Okay, I just wanted to make note of that.
So I would, I would amend that condition for emergency vehicle access in future use by Lowell Housing Authority.
Okay, so now.
Yep.
Now we'll get back to the wall, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Because the intent is to try to screen that parking.
Right. So, any suggestions on the best way to screen the parking is what Mr. Frichette's trying to help accomplish.
So, so, is it Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Martel is.
Margaret Martel.
Okay, sorry, okay, great, sorry. Margot, the Martel property.
Where?
Okay. There's a wall there with a fence on top. Okay.
What's the length of the wall with the fence on top?
It is approximately over 100 feet long.
Well.
Yeah, it goes down the entire backside of.
And whose property is that on?
That is actually.
Ten, when we add it, is a concrete wall.
Okay.
With a three to four foot drop off, not with a four foot chain link fence on top there. My property is a four foot wall with a three foot drop off, it's only stopped in Italy because.
So to.
Don't drop it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But they have a four foot chain link fence, my property.
I, I would rather us.
Four, four, just won't drop those out into the property.
I would rather us not do anything behind the lots of each of those four residences. We should just leave the fencing and the wall the way that it is, we're just, we're just doing minimal grading up against that wall, okay? And we're not proposing, I was just going to, as a, you know, we can replace the fencing that's there, if that's a desire of the abutters. If they want us to just leave the fence alone, we can do that as well, but that was our intention.
Well, I guess that comes back to, whose property is the wall and the fence on?
The wall is on our property. Okay? The fence is actually on the property line on top of the wall. The wall is also, as you get towards the rear of the property, it's actually on the property line.
Well, I mean, they're right, they're, it's right on top. I mean, that's the whole idea, is part of this is screening, and I mean, that's, that is, the parking is right there. And there's not enough room for landscaping to really provide adequate.
Ms. Chairman, we have, if the, if the, if Mr. Rotami wants to keep the fence there, we have no problem with that, his fence, I mean.
Well, yeah, I guess my thing is that the chain link's not keeping, is not providing much screening, so I.
So, you know what we can provide as screening is a row of evergreens on our side of the property that would grow up.
Upon me?
A row of evergreens, arborvitae's, that would provide a natural screening that would be on our side of the sto, of the wall, and we can incorporate that into the landscape.
I guess my concern would be, I, and that would be fine, I think it'd be less, the hardscape would, I mean, it would be a softer look, but I guess my concern is whether or not, I think most of that strip could probably maintain, Matt, what is the, what is the width of, of that landscape area from the last parking spot? No, I'm sorry, yeah, but, but I mean, from the, from the abutters, not the, not the, you know, no, no, this, from, from the, yeah, from the parking spot to the abutters property.
It's probably about six to 10 feet.
All right, I mean, that would be adequate enough to.
Yeah.
To maintain than the arborvitae's.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I guess, then I would condition that, that.
Yes, as we, we know, evergreens like sun.
Yeah.
And that's on the south, that'll be facing the southern, the sun.
Yeah, no, they should do, they should do well, yeah.
The sun's going to come here.
Yeah.
So it's going to be plenty of sun.
Yeah. All right, so I guess, you know, final, final approval by DPD for landscape plan specifically with arborvitae screening on, from the rear of the neighbors on Quimby and the designated parking, right, right, abutting those, those properties. I think that would be probably a better look, so, that would be a better look.
Can I have a look?
Yeah, yes.
This is, this is the area I'm looking at. This is standing in my driveway, looking at where building three would be. That building will be right here.
Yeah, I've got the same picture then, okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
And from my yard, same thing.
Yeah.
That will be where building three is now looking, sitting here. So twenty foot tall arborvitae's there, I could accept that.
Right, especially I want that, well, I wanted to, to screen from the parking, in, in all seriousness, once they mature, they'll add some scale, so they won't cover the full building, but you'll have that scale and then the building behind it. So it's actually going to, it's going to be better than the fence, truthfully, so. So, Mr. Chairman, I would remove the condition of the white vinyl fence and replace that again with that, that landscaping plan, incorporating the arborvitae's for screening for the parking behind those properties on Quimby Street.
Yes, you have a question?
More of a point of order. I'm wondering why there's a motion to approve when there are so many issues outstanding. You've heard.
That's his decision, he's entitled to it.
If I may be heard.
Yeah.
Thank you. What I heard was the stormwater has not been officially reviewed yet. You've only gotten the representations by the engineer, not any affirmative comments from DPD, my understanding from what I heard. You do, the environmental testing was just provided, it has not been reviewed, it sounds like, so therefore, it's, it's an unknown. There are a lot of unknowns here, and I don't understand what the rush to judgment is, if you can't, if you just allow more detail to be submitted so that people have an accurate assessment of what they're going to be living with. I think that's a critical responsibility for the board. The abutters right this minute would not know what is in fact going to be the final result of these plans. It's all to be determined, and respectfully ask that the motion be withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, whether the, the comments from stormwater management team, I don't think will affect the, the aesthetics of the property as it results to the abutters. And once again, the external lighting, the conditions, the requirement within our zoning ordinance is that they cannot, that the lighting has to stay on the property, it cannot go on to the abutters property, they have to comply with that. So from that perspective, we're, we're enhancing the site plan, we're, we've got the, the, at least what I'm offering is the, the screening of the arborvitae's, ensuring that that gate is locked only for emergency vehicles and for the housing authority, future use of the housing authority, and then also adding the welcome pack as, as a condition that you would give the new tenants. And then also we added here this evening that they would work with the city on any timing of any, of the, enhancing of the signalization at the intersection of Chemsford and Plain Street. So I certainly, I offer that as a motion, and I would leave it to my colleagues whether it be, receives a second or whether we vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made on the floor, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion is approved for the site plan. All in favor, none again. Now we have a motion on the, for the special permit for the length of the drive.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating all of the conditions that were placed on the site plan.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved as well. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, members of the board, appreciate your time.
Thank you for your input.
I want to thank Francesca again for all her help, thank you.
Okay, moving along, the next matter we have is a site plan and special permit on 278 Central Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure that you can hear me before I start.
Excuse me, sir, I just have to read the notice, give me a second.
Sure thing, sorry about that.
No problem. Now we have a site plan and special permit for 278 Central Street. BCFC Park LLC, Inc. has applied to the Lowell Planning Board and Lowell Zone, Lowell Board of Appeals for a site plan review and special permit approval to expand the existing 27 unit building at the above address. The addition consists of additional living space, and no units are being added. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use DMU in the multifamily mid-rise overlay zoning district. It requires site plan review approval from the planning board under section 11.4.2.2 for an exterior expansion of residential structure with more than three dwelling units, and a special permit under section 11.3.2 for the operation of a boarding house in the DMU zoning district, and a special permit under section 4.5.3 to extend a non-conforming structure. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Aiden Church, I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street in Gloucester. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you tonight.
Sure, sure, thank you, thank you, counsel.
I want to make sure you can all see that. Can you see that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can see it, at 278 Central Street, we got the outside of the plant, yes.
Thank you, so again, representing BCF Park, BFCFC Park LLC, the proposal, as you mentioned, we are proposing a rearward expansion of an existing structure. We intend to retain the existing mixed use of the building, the ground floor will remain a restaurant, and then above the ground floor, there are 27 boarding units. So by way of background, as you mentioned, we're in the downtown mixed-use district. The lot fronts on Central Street and Green Street. The existing structure actually encroaches over the front left and right property lines, which is what renders it non-conforming, because generally the, the DMU district does not have any setback requirements, but because we actually have negative setbacks here, we are non-conforming dimensionally. The existing restaurant use is as of right, the 27 boarding rooms that are located above the restaurant use. The assessor has it at only 24, but our understanding is that when the applicant acquired the property, there were 27 already existing. So that use requires a special permit in the DMU. We have not ever found a special permit on record, and we do not know exactly when the boarding house use started relative to when it required a special permit from, under the ordinance. So we are requesting a special permit for use, just to make sure that we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is in terms of, you know, properly permitting the entire property. So, as you probably already know, the applicant was operating under a building permit for a while to basically rehab the interior and exterior of the structure. They found significant structural deficiencies on the inside of the structure, which required more work than they initially expected, so to sort of recoup some of those additional costs, the applicant's now looking to expand rearward to add some additional floor space for some of the, for some of the boarding units, but again, is not increasing the occupancy of the structure itself. So in terms of what approvals we need for this project, we need a variance from the zoning board for floor area ratio. We're at the zoning board next week on this project. From the planning board, we do need site plan review, but we believe that there's a question as to whether or not this actually requires site plan review, and that question is sort of important because where site plan review, where site plan review is required, the planning board, as you know, becomes the special, special permit granting authority for all special permits affecting the property. So, and I'll get to this, but, you know, if the, if the board determines that site plan review is not required, then the ZBA will retain jurisdiction over the other special permits, so that's sort of why I want to leave this up to the board as an initial determination. So I'll get to that issue right after I just run through the plans quickly. So here's the site plan, as you can see, just the, the rearward expansion is encapsulating the majority of the lot, we're right up, as I said, right up if not over all the property lines on all sides, and then we are getting close to that rear property line there as well. So, and then here's just the full construction plan set. I don't know if it's worth going through in great detail, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to circle back and answer those specific questions, I'm sure that you've already reviewed these plans pretty thoroughly. So that's all existing in demo plans, and then here's the proposed new basement with the addition, and the first floor is the restaurant use. Here are the boarding units that are getting rehabbed here with the addition in the rear, and then the same here, the fourth floor and the roof plan. Here are just the exterior designs, as you can see. As you can see, the applicant's architect has already gone through the historic commission and gained approval for that. So the structure and the aesthetic nature of the structure is- has been determined by that commission to be in keeping with neighborhood character and historic elements. So just skipping through here quickly, here's just the artistic renderings, again, from the outsides. And here's an aerial shot. As you can see, the structure and just to the right of the structure in this view is essentially the whole lot. All of the parking area is actually outside of the locus. And here's an exterior view of the structure currently under construction. And that's the same here. So as I said, I think there is a question that is important to determine at this point whether or not site plan review is indeed necessary. As you know, section 11.4.2.2 requires site plan review for the exterior expansion of a residential structure with more than three dwelling units. Dwelling unit is a defined term in the ordinance. It's defined as "any room or suite of rooms forming habitable unit for one family with its own cooking and food storage equipment, and its own bathing and toilet facilities, and its own living, sleeping, and eating areas wholly within such room or suite of rooms." So, again, this is a boarding house with boarding units. We do not have dwelling units in the structure in the sense that, you know, there are not all of these amenities located in every room. That's sort of what makes it a boarding house to begin with. So I don't believe that it's a structure, a residential structure with more than three dwelling units, you know, under that strict definition. But at the same time, I'm not going to die on this hill. It's- I'm here, ready to present the full application tonight, but I did want to just give the board the opportunity to, you know, make this determination yourselves, considering that it does implicate and sort of determine who's going to make the special permit decisions for the other relief necessary. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, for that initial determination, I think. And then, you know, again, I'm happy to proceed under the site plan review criteria and under the special criteria as well, but just want to allow you to make that determination first.
I don't see any harm in going forward on the site plan review. I think from the comment that we received from staff and the fact that you got this historic board approval, I would say, speaking on behalf of myself, I'm in favor of the site plan and your special permit. So I don't think it would hurt to go forward on the site plan. I think it- you might have a good likelihood of success on the site plan.
That works for me. I just did not want to, you know, impose here. I just wanted to make sure that the board, you know-
Oh, I understand, counsel. I understand your point very well, and the question would be, you know, you know, the more time we got lawyers involved, the more time we got ambiguities and things that are explained differently. Do we have to impose all that criteria? Are there so much of the criteria to cover it? And it could be a legal question, but I think of the satisfaction of what's before us between the site plan and the special permit. I think the special permit is the most important things, and I think staff has no problems with those. And I think the criteria is a lot more strict with this special permit. And, you know, looking at our staff comments, they're pretty favorable for what you're requesting. You know, I think one of the only questions under the site plan is, can we submit a full utility plan? And then the special permit, basically, they're in agreement with everything you're asking for. So if you want to proceed with the three, I'm sure the board won't attack on those three, and we don't see anything that's been presented to us negatively so far. Obviously, it's a public hearing. We'll open up to public. But, and as we continue, if you want to raise that objection again, I mean, we're going to be happy to hear from you.
No, I'm happy to continue under the site plan review and under the special criteria. I'll reshare my screen here.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. I appreciate that. Okay?
Okay, so we should be back up here. So we've made this determination. Happy to continue.
Sure. Absolutely, sir.
All right. So we've discussed the site plan review criteria quite a bit tonight. Just at the outset, for what's a relatively, you know, minor project relative to some of the other projects that we've seen tonight, we are requesting a waiver under section 11.4.9 for an actual landscaping and lighting plan, utility plan, although it sounds like you will want a condition that we do submit a utility plan, so we'll be fine with that. And then an actual drainage plan, because, again, the structure is existing, and it's a small lot without, you know, there's no room for landscaping or like streetlights or anything like that. So we will be requesting those waivers. In terms of the standards, as I mentioned, for siloed buildings, we're looking at a rearward expansion of the existing structure. In terms of traffic flow, safety, and parking, the boarding use does not require any off-street parking in the DMU. And then the restaurant use is also exempted if it's within 1,500 feet of a publicly owned parking facility. We are within 1,500 feet of the Edward Early parking garage, and there are another, a number of other, I think, at least two other garages that are within walking distance. If they're close to 1,500 feet, I think slightly over, but well within a half mile. And then in terms of parking, I have been in contact with the owner of the property to the rear, who is Attorney Geary, who was here earlier tonight. And he's had some issues with parking on his property in the past, but he has submitted a letter in support, so long as we will provide some signage on the locus, saying that, you know, parking's not allowed on the adjacent properties, they're- it's just prohibited. So, and in terms of expanding the structure, again, we're not expanding the occupancy, so we don't think that it's going to have a real impact on surrounding traffic. So in terms of adequacy of utilities, we're undergoing full interior renovations, so fixing the property up in terms of those interior utilities. And then public utilities, public services, again, the structure and the use have existed for a number of years. In terms of exterior lighting, there will be lighting, as shown on the elevations plans, around all of the exterior doors of the structure. But again, there's nowhere to put, say, a streetlight, and there's no need for a streetlight because there's no parking lot. In terms of landscaping and screening, the structure does encompass pretty much the whole lot. I think there's- there would not even be room to put a fence or a screen around the structure without encroaching onto somebody else's property. In terms of snow removal, again, because there's no parking lot, there's no plowing, all removal from the sidewalks, to the extent that that's the applicant's responsibility, to the extent the board determines that it is, and, you know, the city doesn't take care of it. I'm pretty sure that the applicant takes care of it anyways, but, you know, he will remove that by hand, not by plowing. And then in terms of environmental impact, the lot's already fully developed. The structure already covers about 75%, and it will cover about 94% of the lot once we're done with the renovation. So again, I've already touched on these. I won't touch on those again right now. In terms of special permit for the use, as I mentioned, we're not sure when this became a boarding use, so we think that it's probably best to just ask for the special permit now and make sure that that use is properly permitted moving forward. So as you know, the standards are whether or not the social, economic, and community needs are served. Again, this use has existed for many years, so it will continue to benefit the community by providing some affordable housing options separate from, you know, regular apartment-style buildings. I've already touched on the traffic flow and safety in the site plan review criteria. I've also touched on the utilities in the site plan review criteria. In terms of neighborhood character and social structure, we think that the project will enhance the character of the existing neighborhood, because we're expanding and retaining this longstanding structure, revitalizing it and making it, you know, aesthetically pleasing, and will meet new code requirements and things of that sort. I've already mentioned the impacts on the natural environment. And in terms of fiscal impact, we think that this is a benefit for the city and for the applicant. You know, it'll revitalize the structure, so the city will likely increase their tax assessment and will create new revenue for the city. And hopefully, you know, the occupancy of the structure and the bottom-floor restaurant will bring, you know, bring people in, and that also spend money in the city and things like that. And then there's the second half of those factors under 11.3.2.A. The application's relation to the master plan is that we'll revitalize downtown property. There'll be a vibrant ground-level commercial restaurant, diverse housing options, expand commercial opportunity, hopefully provide, you know, a local a chance to run a restaurant while still retaining some of these affordable housing options that exist above the restaurant. I've really already touched on neighborhood character and environment, traffic, and I really think I've already touched on additional impacts as well. I think finally, the last special permit is just to alter and expand the structure, because as I mentioned, it was, is pre-existing non-conforming dimensionally in terms of those negative setbacks. And of course, we're not creating any new non-conformities here, except for the floor area ratio, which we will be getting separate relief from the ZBA next week, hopefully, of course. So the standard for a special permit to alter and expand is that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Here, we're expanding in a dimensionally conforming nature to the rear of the structure. It won't negatively impact the surrounding properties, and again, the property most affected is that property to the rear, Attorney Geary's property, and he has submitted a letter in support, providing, again, that we provide that onsite signage to address the, hopefully, address the parking issue there. So again, from the board, we're requesting site plan review, special permit to alter and expand, and a special permit for use to properly permit that longstanding boarding house use. So that's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, I'm going to open up to public, and then if we have any questions through the board, we'll get back to you. Okay? Thank you. So at this point in time, do we have anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone that sees it in favor? Favor? In favor? Hearing none? That portion of the hearing is closed? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? That portion of the hearing is closed? Counsel, I believe you said in your statement that the mat had already been before the historic board, and maybe you received approval from them?
That's my understanding from the architect. Yep?
Yeah, okay. Well, for planning board members, I'm going to start with Lucia Walker. She is our representative who sits on the historic board. So I'll start with her tonight, if she has any questions or comments on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First Lucia? Thank you.
Thank you. This project did come before the historic board, and a historic permit was issued. The building is about 200 years old, and it's in Greek revival character. And the architect has been very, very much in touch with the historic board with regard to color, storefront, cornices, so they've just been very cooperative the entire way. And I think that overall, the enhancements to the project, to the site will be great. It'll look great in the city, and it'll keep a business there. I don't think that the expansion is going to impede anything that's around it, and if you look at what's there now, the addition, which is what they're actually fixing, is pretty dilapidated from the outside. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sa, any questions?
Aye. No.
Okay. Mr. Fchet, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to compliment the Seaside Legal for the package. I don't recall you coming before a land use for in the city of Lowell, but I think you touched on everything that we looked to see in an application, so I was pleased to see that. I do have, I guess, just more of a comment. I would put it as a condition. But in the narrative, it talks about the front and left side encroachments of technically, technically within the layout of Central and Green Streets respectively. So I think it would be appropriate for the city's law department and the city engineering department to determine whether or not the city should be granting an easement based on the boundaries of the property. We haven't run into that in a long, 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 long time, but that certainly is something that jumped out at me when I saw that. Other than that, I think, you know, it was folklore that Abraham Lincoln stayed there, which he did not, but it was probably a boarding house back then, I suspect. But I think, I actually like the idea of it taking up more of the site. There's been some behavior back there that's pretty tough. So honestly, developing that to the rear of the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, I think will actually make that area a little safer. And then you did acknowledge the abutters' request, Attorney Geary, for signage, basically instructing patrons of the restaurant not to park on the, any of the abutting sites. So, other than that, I think that property has been in need of a facelift for a long time, and it's nice to see work has actually started on that project, and hopefully, hopefully you'll finish without any more surprises relative to the budget and structural issues. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, we did have the letter from Attorney Geary. I should have had that earlier, but I forgot to pull it out of the packet here. This is from Attorney Geary, addressed to myself and the members of the planning board. "I am the manager of 32 Church Street LLC, which owns the property located at 32 Church Street Lowell, Mass., where my law office, Geary &amp; Geary LLP, is located, is an abut to the property at 278 Central Street Lowell, Mass. The property, which has the application pending before the board, I have had the opportunity to speak with the applicant's attorney and to review the plans associated with the redevelopment of the property. I have no objection to the plans being presented for approval, and I believe the redevelopment will result in significant improvement to this section of downtown Lowell. However, I have expressed my concerns to the applicant's attorney that because of the lack of parking associated with redevelopment on the property, I requested the applicant provide notification by way of signage to any person of the proposed restaurant to be located at the property, and any residence of property, that there shall be no parking allowed at 32 Church Street. It would be appreciated if this could be incorporated into the favorable decision as a condition of approval. I look forward to seeing the property redeveloped in the matter being requested to this board." Yeah, I'm very familiar with the property. I used to work at the Lowell District Court on Hurd Street, and from Hurd Street, we could look right through George Street parking lot and see this building on a daily basis. And a lot of times, I'd be out walking at lunchtime, and I'd see this area. As indicated, it is in need of some structural work. I know it's the needs of a facelift, and I think what you're requesting is going to help this site look a much better. I know you have the, as you've shown in the plans, like the screening out front there that you're working on, and I know they've been doing some work in the rear. When I drove by before, I saw the gentleman putting things up on the second or third story, bringing things in and out, cleaning things up. So I'm in favor of the plan. I think, as indicated, the only request for the site plan, that they've requested a supplemental for full utility plan, I think that should not be any inconvenience. Like I said, a special permit, the application requires to operate a boarding house, and then also requires a special permit to extend a non-conforming. Like I said, who knows when it was approved, but I think both of those actually go hand in hand when you think of it, because how do you approve one without the other, in my opinion, I think? But it covers the special permit criteria. So I'm in favor of the site plan. I'm in favor of both the special permits, and I think, as Ms. Walker indicated, that this is a big improvement. You worked well with the historic board. I used to be a member on the historic board as well, and I know, you know, they're concerned with the design and the- with the design and the colors and what fits in downtown. I know Mr. Stoll does a good job in working on that. And it's nice to have a planning board representative on that board to give us feedback back when it comes to hearings like this, and, you know, what happened at the hearing, and, you know, how the architect is willing to work with the city and planning department to make this a better project. So as indicated, I'm all in favor of it. I have no further comments besides that. Any other board members having further comments?
I just want to make...
Sure.
I had been in there.
Well, I've been there too, inside. We had a lot of probation officers in there.
At one point, yeah.
The probation is that we had to go visit in there.
Yeah, when you go in there and you leave, you need to wash your clothes.
And Mr. Sa and I both worked together, the District Court together. And we had a couple of probationers there.
To know that, you know...
Matter of fact, when one of them passed away, they came over to the courthouse asking us if they knew any of their heirs, because they wanted to try to reach out to find out who lived there. But, yeah, so we saw it on a regular basis. We know the area very well. Yeah. But I think it would definitely be an improvement.
Yes.
Saying that...
Make a motion to...
You want to make a motion, Mr. Sa, to approve?
Yes.
The site plan? Do you want to put the condition in that the applicant submit a utility plan? And what was the other question you had, Mr. Fischett?
I would just add that it be reviewed by the law department and city engineers department to determine whether or not the city should be issuing an easement on the encroachment on Central Street and Green Streets.
Actually, if they do that, it'd be beneficial to the applicant. Counsel, do you have any problem with that?
Could you repeat that, that second condition?
Yes. That the application is to be reviewed by the law department and the city engineers department to determine if an easement by the city of Lowell is required or should, whether the city of Lowell should issue an easement for the encroachments of the building on Central Street and Green Streets.
Counsel, you want to be heard on that, or is that something that you feel would be beneficial to clear this matter?
I think that would be fine as a condition for the law department's review. We do have an easement on that right side.
Actually, if you get it, it'd be beneficial, yeah.
Yeah. And may I also just add, just want to make sure that the board incorporates that third decision regarding the parking signage.
Yeah, we're going to get to that. Yeah, yeah. So any other condition? It would be that there'll be a sign put up, there'd be no parking on 32 Church Street as requested by Attorney Gary?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd have those three conditions. It satisfies with those three conditions, Fran. So we have the utility plan, have the legal department engineer look into whether there should be an easement and a new parking sign, probably, you know, people will be towed away, you know, whichever.
Okay, did where?
On 32 Church Street. I mean, but on...
Where on the property, though?
Yeah. Where did he? Let me see if Mr. Gary mentioned in detail. Counsel, did Attorney Gary indicate that to you, which sounds like you two had discussions?
It would be on our property. Attorney Gary already has signage on his property.
Okay. So you have no problem putting it? Would it go on the property, I mean, on the building itself, you think? Or it'd be a freestanding sign?
You know, I think, I don't know if there's room necessarily for it to be freestanding. It would have to be either on an outside wall facing that property.
And if it's up high enough, it's not going to get knocked over by plow or whatever else in the neighborhood, or?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So on their property line? So, okay. So Mr. Sa made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none? So the special, I mean, excuse me, the site plan is approved. The next matter would be the special permit. Do we have another motion by Mr. Sa with the same conditions? Second by Lucia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair, vote yes. For the special permit for the, to extend the non-conforming structure. And then the other one is, oh, excuse me. The first one would be for operation of a boarding house. So that was the second special permit. I mean, the first special permit, maybe I got it here. So the second special permit would be for the non-conforming structure. You going to make the same motion on that, Mr. Sa?
Yes.
Okay. So for the second special permit, it will be the motion by Mr. Sa with the previous three conditions that were outlined on the site plan and the special permit. Do we have a second on that? Lucia, second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair, vote yes. So that's been approved. So we have the site plan approved, and two special permits approved. Do you want to be heard further, Counsel, on the site plan? Are you satisfied with the vote and our determination? I told you, I told you I'd give you a chance to speak on that.
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, sir. And job well done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, moving along in the agenda. I complete four and a half public hearings. Any further comments from any of the board members? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, yep.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned. Good night, and thank you much, everybody. Thank you very much. Not too bad. I thought it would be...